Okay.
Is that the power? Okay, I guess.
I mean, they made it so. Under.
That's what Paul.
He got off the wall though, he was advice.
It is. It's good, but it doesn't stay. No, I looked for something else last July. Okay, yeah, I always thought in some. They started paying. Maybe. I mean, they'll.
Interesting.
We can reach.
You guys ready? Yeah, we're ready, sorry. Let's call to order the regular meetings of Jasper City Common Council through August twentieth. Please have roll call.
The guiding officer, Mayor Dean Vonderhaid.
Here.
Councilmember John Trader.
Here.
Councilmember Chad Leekit.
Present.
Councilmember Ben Tully.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Loride.
Present.
Councilmember Kevin Manley.
Here.
Councilmember Nancy Efferley.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Mundy.
Here.
City Attorney Renee Haver.
Here.
White Treasurer Kirsten Keneath.
Here.
In order to have a forum, a majority of the council members must be in attendance, all the members are in attendance, which is a majority, therefore there is a forum for this meeting.
Wait, please take a moment for personal question. Thank you, men. All that are able, please stand and join for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, by mission and power, and justice for all.
Thank you, the minutes were set out for July twenty-third meeting. Any additions or corrections? If not, I would entertain a motion to.
Salute.
A motion from John.
I will say.
Second chair. Any further discussion? All in favor, sit by saying aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Today we have a department presentation by Tim Dorson, gas and water.
Good evening. Just wanted to go over some projects that distribution side has done this year and looking forward to next year on both the gas and water. First of all, emergency backup water supply is complete as far as supplying water. We do have some issues that we need to pan out on the SCADA system. But a torque engineer will come down and complete that here shortly. Mill Street between Ninth and Fifteenth Street, the water main is in place. It's good to go, no issues there whatsoever. And then Brossmer Street, we did, our crew did put in about twelve hundred foot of pipe ourselves. So that went well for us, and as far as the skyline neighborhood, that is complete. And seems like everybody's happy on that side, so it's good to have that completed. Furpile did a great job for us. We work together very well, so they're a very good company to work with.
Your water seems to be running clear.
It's running clear. Okay, so in progress, we are getting close to completing Fourth Street. So we're looking at finishing up tomorrow, and probably Friday, we're going to fill it. And then we'll let it sit over the weekend, and then we'll start sampling Monday and Tuesday, and once those samples get through, we'll open her up. So that'd be good. It's good to get that four inch out. It's, it was in bad shape and it was much needed. Thirteenth Dorbit's main replacement, Copper Ridge is working on that currently, as you are aware of. They are at Robert Street intersection there on thirteenth. Everything's going good. We did have a main break last, last week, I believe Thursday it was. But with the shape that pipe is and heavy equipment going over it, it doesn't surprise that. It may happen again, so don't be surprised if that happens, happens again. Every once in a while, you'll get a soft spot in that main, so hopefully. Just one or maybe two leaks will happen. We did eliminate a lot of old main cast iron this year, so we got the four inch out. And we're trying to get us all the four inch out, we're going to look in the future. At where the other spots is, where the four inches is, and we'll get that out of the ground. We are replacing with a six, could be eight inch C nine hundred. We had so far this year twenty-four water main leaks, so that tells you that we're going to continue to put in new water mains. On the gas distribution side, we installed a hundred thirty-two feet of steel pipe on Eighth and Main. We are currently working on Ninth and Main with a hundred fifty foot, foot of steel pipe. And we're looking at probably getting that done this week. And if not this week, it'll be early next week when we'll get that completed and then ready to finish up their project there. And then also. Looking at. Projects coming up. We are looking at. Twenty twenty-six, we're looking at water main replacement. Between, on Fifteenth Street, East Fifteenth Street from Vine Street to the bridge. That is our number one project that we're looking at. Because the street department wants to repave that area, and that main has caused as many leaks in the past. And then also, we are going to relocate four inch high pressure gas line, Eighth and Bartley to two thirty-one and Fifth. That is towards the Y. We're doing that because of A dot. Looking at possibly repaving that area in the future, so we want to get that out of, out of the way for them.
Eighth and Bartley.
Yes, yes, I've talked, I've talked to Jeff.
Where, where does it go? From Eighth and Bartley, where?
Eighth to Bartley to two thirty-one and Fifth, yeah.
And on that. East Fifteenth Street to the bridge, would that require total closure of that street?
No, it shouldn't, but. What, it just depends on how that's laid off, out going across by the railroad tracks. So we might have to close up a small section, but we will let you know in plenty of time, yeah. Yeah, and we're looking at probably spreading them next year to start that project, so.
This is probably a Rob question, but is sanitary under Fifteenth Street? Dude, is sanitary under Fifteenth?
Locate that. I'm not sure, sitting here off the top of my head, but.
Otherwise, it might have to be one of them.
It's under fifteen between five and four.
But I mean, well, there.
Yeah, it's, I'm not sure about that either, so we'll double check on that one. Also on Geneva, we'll do ourselves a water main replacement there. They have an old pipe in, in that area. And we've had quite a few leaks on it, so we'll be taking care of that ourselves next year. And actually, look at, look, we're going to look at the pavement projects coming up next year from the street department and. We'll do, we'll plan accordingly to anything that we need to take care of. So basically, that's all I have.
See, how much is we have left yet to, to actually replace, like a percent? Are we halfway there?
Honestly, Kevin, I don't think we're halfway there, you know, we, we do have some old pipe in, in there, you know. In the ground, we've had areas that we've been hit hard by leaks. So we're, like I said, with the street department, we'll plan accordingly to get as much as we possibly can out. Okay?
That's a good coordinated effort, nobody likes to see the street dug up.
Exactly, and, and that's, that's our priority, to keep it, keep in pace with them.
Tim, I think you were referring to thirteenth. Robert, did you say Robert? Expected to happen again.
Dorbin.
Dorbit, yeah.
Where I think you said you expected. You would be surprised if it happened again, so is that only in reference to the old?
The old.
Okay.
The old man, yeah.
That sounded like a larger problem.
We, we've had, we've had quite a few leaks on that area. It's a nineteen twenty-three. Pipe in there, so that's not, you know, not surprising that, that would happen.
So in regard to what he was saying, Chad was saying, so you expect maybe one of these people repair or replace? Is that what you mean?
We will, we will repair, and then if possible, like last week, we put a clamp on it. And then what we did, we had two services on that, and we're, we're going to put those services on the new main as soon as possible. But yeah, we will replace all that main through there, and hopefully. Or we should, we'll keep the old pipe in the ground. We're not going to take the old pipe out. We're going to leave the old pipe in the ground and put a new C nine hundred in there. So for future, they won't have any issues.
You, you said, you said, I'm sorry, you said nineteen twenty-three, what? Fifteen twenty-three.
Year.
A year?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, we got some old pipes.
I weren't here already.
Yeah, it is. They don't make them like they used to. Anything else?
No.
Alrighty, thank you.
Yeah, Ashley. What Tim didn't, didn't mention here, but he did, Department Leader meeting this morning, was that they're going to start their hydrant flushing here in September. That'll, that'll go on for.
September second.
September second. That'll go on for about six weeks.
Six weeks, yeah.
Just so we, so we work that through. That's, we're seasonal, but either flushing to need that, keep the system.
And when they're doing that, are they also, do they also discover low pressure in some of the hydrants? That affect not only your department, but the fire department?
Yeah, what we do is. Don't you want to come to the mic again? Sorry, Ashley.
You're fine.
I walked away.
So anyway, Geneva, that is one area that has low pressure, and that's why we want to get that main out of there too. Because that, the order flowing out of the hydrants is not up to our standards. I mean, right now, it, it works, but not good enough pressure for us.
We're doing a hydrology study across the city right now, pressures, flows, just to understand where we have to address. So I think being proactive on this, it's a big plus.
Yeah, with that.
It's not done yet.
No, no, yes, we are doing a water assessment plan right now, and that is part of it also, so we'll, we'll keep that going on that. So, anything else? Alright, just call me.
I plan to do a presentation, share the results of that asset management plan with everybody that looks at the pressures, whole system. It's, it's pretty interesting what they've shown us so far, so, and it should tell us. The question was asked one percent, I mean, they don't tell you target one percent per year.
We're gonna laugh, we, we, why don't you come up, sorry.
I was trying to be loud and short.
Yeah.
Sorry.
You're fine.
That asset management plan with Westler Engineering will give us a lot of information on flows throughout the city, where's our pressure, it'll kind of show, like, I keep calling it like an equilibrium amount to view. What the whole system looks like, and then from a replacement standpoint, it'll look at age, it'll risk assess all the areas, and it should start to prioritize out all those activities. So to your question, Kevin, are we halfway there? Probably not, but it's not, we won't make that up over the next couple of years, it'll be a longer term plan, but there are some things that we probably want to be more aggressive on in the near term, so. But we'll share that when that's completed. It should be done maybe in about four weeks, and then we could put together some key points and maybe do a couple of presentations on it, so.
What would be a plan for a low pressure area, let's say like, you know, where you just don't have much pressure, not only to the homes, but for the fire.
Yeah, I mean, there could be, be pumps and boosters that you need to put in place in certain areas. I mean, there's even discussion on future state. Is there another tower at some point? You know, is there another tank that we've been in place, so. But they'll, they'll have recommendations on that, and we'll be able to decide, look at where we see growth, where we see issues, and where do we want to make those investments? I expect it to be pretty comprehensive, so I'll be disappointed if it's not.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Now you're up, Ashley. Try again, right? Ashley Kiefer, Business Manager for the Utility Office. So the business office has been in the mode of continuous improvements this past year, with the help and endorsement of General Manager Rob Young. My staff is excited, engaged, and continuously working to find ways to increase efficiency and enhance our customer experience. So here's a, trying to be a quick recap on what you've been working on the past year. The biggest project that we're trying really hard to wrap up is the advanced metering infrastructure project. That progress does continue. With the installation of water and gas, new AMI meters at endpoints. The electric department has all of their customers switched over to the new meters as of March of this year. The project in total is about eighty-nine percent complete now, with the electric department being a hundred percent complete. Water is eighty percent complete, and gas is at eighty-three percent completion. Again, just a refresher, this new metering system allows us to alert customers sooner about potential leaks. We have faster response times to electric outages. And now we can remotely disconnect and reconnect meters for non-payment or for other reasons. We can do that from the office. Versus rolling trucks out to do those types of activities. The data's also been extremely helpful when working with customers and working with contractors who are doing work for customers. We get reads in fifteen minute increments, so we are able to monitor things very closely and help pinpoint times and different places that problems are happening. The last part of that project that we're trying to get going right now is the smart meter portal. We've been working on this for several months. After some delays, we're finally ready to be able to roll that out to customers here shortly. My staff will be receiving training on the portal on September eighth and eleventh. And then we're also working on the plan to push that out and roll that out to all the customers. So then at that point in time, they'll be able to log on online and monitor their own accounts, add alerts for leaks, dollar thresholds, consumption points. That type of thing, so they'll have more control over their utility functions at their home. Some projects that we have completed in the past year. One of those is the Jasper Inside Communication App. Hopefully you all are on that and receiving those alerts now. As of August thirteenth, we've had one thousand seven hundred and thirty downloads of the app. We've sent out eighty-nine notifications so far. We're trying to get that pumped up and get some more departments on there and. Get them participating in that with us, and marketing and continuing education on the app is continuing. So that's working real good for us. It's very easy to use, and we're all very pleased with that project. We've also put in place a service alert communication protocol. We were kind of struggling a little bit to get communication out on water main breaks and oil advisories. We've established that protocol for clear, concise, consistent messaging, which was adopted in a USB resolution form. We also have public notification templates now created in door hangers for easy distribution. We've also completed the scan to Tyler software capability. This allows documents to be scanned and attached to records in our Tyler software. Such as customer applications, customer IDs, journal entry backup, fixed asset backup, which helps us reduce paper storage and use in our office. Another completed project is our AP automation project. Our accounts payable process is now completely automated since April. It allows us to scan invoices into our system automatically and upload it into our software, digital workflows. Were created to route invoices in the system to supervisors, managers, and back to our accounting department to approve before submitting for payment. This eliminates the need different hundreds of invoices each month for processing. It also makes it easier for our finance committee to approve claims monthly, instead of getting a huge stack of, you know, three hundred and fifty to five hundred invoices. They're now presented with a detailed claim docket report instead. They're now presented with a detailed claim docket report instead um, to review that way. Uh, we also have the ability to digitally present those invoices, should they have any questions on what they're looking at on the report. Uh, the system also allows us to illustrate proper approval points along the way, which satisfies the state board of accounts requirements. And this has eliminated the need for two utility business office employees to process AP down to one, so that's been a definite savings there. Uh, we've also assisted with the onboarding of IT services with X O S I T, which um, thankfully you all have agreed to um, allow us to do that. Um, the addition of the onsite X O S I T staff has been a huge help uh, for me in particular. It has freed up a bunch of my time. Uh, not having to troubleshoot um, IT issues any longer. We now have a person on site to do that. Uh, another project that's complete is uh, the Munich Cast software. And Rob, um, Young and Mark Fierce, our controller, has implemented this financial forecasting software in our office. Um, it offers scenario planning, rate change analysis, cash projections, and capital planning. Uh, they're still um, tweaking it just a little bit on the output of graphics and scenario setups, but you'll be seeing uh, bits and pieces of that coming forward here shortly. And that allows better communication and planning between our office administration, department managers, utility service board members, and you all the council. Um, have a couple of projects currently underway still. Uh, one of them is digitizing our payroll process and timekeeping. Uh, we purchased the time and attendance module um, for our so, uh, Tyler software, which uh, works with the existing payroll module we currently have. And this allows for electronic timekeeping versus the paper time cards that we use today and manually process. Um, this will give our employees um, uh, electronic time clocks to use or an app on their phone to clock in and out daily. Uh, we are currently entering stage two of this project. Uh, we just met with our project manager today with a project timeline. Uh, that we should have this um, project finished by mid uh, December of this year. Um, another one that's currently underway is the migration to the new document management system from Square Nine, which some of you have probably heard about um, already. Uh, it's replacing the current central work system, which is being eliminated by year end. And this, uh, we will also be analyzing uh, possible additional capabilities that we'll be able to use with Square Nine for integration with Esri software to map city easements. Workflow creations to assist with contract revisions, negotiations, our um, utility customer application, and hopefully permit processes. Uh, future projects um, that we have um, looking out a little bit further. But just different, continuing to analyze different ways to leverage our current Tyler software solutions to increase efficiency. Um, one we'll be looking at shortly is uh, the miscellaneous AR module, which um, would allow us to bill um, things other than just a regular utility bill. Like if you um, ordered a bacteria test for water, and we would bill you for something like that. Uh, we currently do that out of um, Excel right now, which is a lot, um, a lot of manual manipulation, so we're looking to automate that and add that to our software as well. Uh, we're also looking to revamp our past due and cutoff processes. And possibly to um, utilize Tyler Notify, which is an automated notification system to our utility customers, such as you have a past due balance, please pay now. Kind of um, phone call or text message, things like that, and then hopefully trying to um, automate and then um. Make it easier for our utility permitting process. And as always, we are continuing to support all of our utility departments with their ongoing projects as well. And then um, also working to continue to keep our bad debt write-offs as low as possible as they have been in years past. So that's all I have this evening.
Got a lot of stuff going on.
We do, we do, but it's exciting times. We're all uh, really enjoying the work we're doing right now and kind of energized by, by everything that's going on.
Love our nation.
Yes, yes, we're working really hard at that, yep.
What was our bad debt for this last year?
I do, because I figured somebody would ask. I, in twenty twenty-four, we wrote off four thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-four cents. Which was approximately zero point zero one, zero one percentage of sales, which was an estimated forty-six million for twenty twenty-four.
Any company would be proud of that.
Yes, yes, we're extremely proud of that.
Well, round question to go across the line, but you talk about an automatic, or an automated um, timekeeping system. Will you be looking at that for the civil city side too?
Yes.
Okay.
Totally, but yeah.
Hopefully we're. Working together.
Yes, we're, we're, we're hoping that uh, we can get both sides of the hallway, um, civil city side and utilities uh, working out of the same software system. Um, which is really exciting to me, that would um, take a, away a lot of redundancy of entering different information in two places. Um, so um, that's something that, that we would be assisting with as well, whenever they're ready to move on that, on that end.
Great. Very good, Ashley.
Thank you.
Your update.
Sure, no problem.
All you do. Alright. So as Ashley said, they're energized. We should be as well, listen to those updates. Uh, next thing is ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twelve. Let me make a motion, reorganize all twenty-five dash twelve, for one reading only, please. They have a motion for all, one reading only.
I'll say that.
I'll say Gavin. All in favor, send them by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They have a motion to have the ordinance written full, or by title, and.
Make a motion to read by title only.
Have a motion Nancy, to read the title only.
Okay.
Second, Phil. All in favor, send them by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Attorney, please read ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twelve, entitled only.
Ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash twelve, an ordinance to rezone certain property within the jurisdictional limits of the Planning Commission of the City of Jasper, Indiana.
They have a motion to pass and adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash. I'll make that motion. Motion Gavin, I'll say it. Second, Vince. Further discussion.
Oh, this, yeah, this, yeah, this project came uh, this month, uh, in front of this full planning commission and the board of zoning appeals. Uh, this would be the property, the grass area behind Jasper Lofts, a little wood products building. Uh, in there, there was an office in the south.
Vine Street.
Excuse, Vine Street, excuse. Office in the southeast corner of that property on there that's going to come down, looking at ten more complexes across that property. Two, four of them would face, have driveways come between the buildings, jumping on to Fourteenth Streets. Uh, in there, there's one that it kind of turns the opposite direction and comes out of Leopold, and then five across the back of that property. Uh, in there with off-street parking on both of them. At the, uh, B Z A meeting, we had a couple of neighbors complain about traffic parking on there, not remembering when that was an active factory, three hundred people came twice a day, at the exact same time, supposed to stagger. Um, you've got to see it in the buildings, uh, the projections that were listed on the big prepress, have the last rendered, no bills, but they think library square. Buildings like that, that'll, that'll come down, yeah. So, we, we uh, heard it through B Z A, we heard it through Plan Commission, both recommendations were favorable to the council. To approve the B zone from an I two industrial to an R four, to better section.
So this is owned by PAF.
Uh huh.
So that is a different owner than the apartments.
Correct, they, they purchased the property at the back of the, you know, Vine Street Lofts, in there, so.
What's your timeframe on that?
I don't think this, uh, like there, the incident, you scared me, sorry, sorry, you didn't mean to steal your brother.
You get phone, scared all of them. You think they'll come for an over.
Do you guys have a map of what's going on here?
We have, we can share.
Yeah.
Can you uh, reiterate what Paul said about how many buildings there would be?
Yes, uh, absolutely, and. Understand right now, they're in the kind of conceptual phase of all of this. Um, their main priority now is to get it to rezone, then with the B Z A, we also got some uh, variances for the setbacks as well, so that, where they can do what they're wanting to do. Um, but right now, as you see on that third sheet that I handed out to you guys, um, it's an L-shaped lot, um, borders Fourteenth Street, Leopold, and uh, Thirteenth Street on the south side. What they're wanting to do is divide this, ultimately divide this up into three new lots. They're gonna have two that front along Fourteenth Street, and then one that uh, mostly fronts along Leopold Street. Um, and as you can see, each lot will have its own independent parking lot that will um, provide access to each one of their buildings, or building complexes, so like. The farthest northwest lot will have two buildings on it, the northeast lot will have three buildings on it, and then the southeast lot will have. Five buildings on it. Um, and we did this mostly because if you ever driven past there, the topography of it is really difficult. There's a big hill in there, there's thirty, I think there's thirty, thirty-five feet of fall from Leopold Street on the east, Divine Street on the west. Uh, same thing, uh, going about halfway along Leopold Street down to Fourteenth Street on the north, and so your access is real limited off those streets. Uh, but then also, the way that we're able to configure the parking lots in the buildings, it makes sense for the site to utilize it well. Uh, and to create a, a really nice complex out there for uh, both PAFs and the residents of this facility and uh, joining tracks as well. But right now, this is what their concept is, this is what they're working towards.
So right now, the pink part is parking?
The pink part is parking, the blue is the buildings, um, and then what's left is gonna mostly be grass lawns. And we'll add some, you know, we'll obviously have to meet the landscaping requirements and everything else set for by the U D O, we just don't have it, you know, we don't have a real detailed plan yet.
And each one of those buildings would consist of?
Um, right now, they're thinking uh, uh, four units per building. Um, I think they're leaning towards uh, two-bedroom units as well, probably gonna be two stories.
Good.
Uh, that's what they're aiming for right now. I know they're working with the city just to see what's, what, what's the demand around here, what would be more favorable, um. So it's kind of been up in the air, but right now it's four units per building, yeah, two bedrooms per unit.
Do they have price range? Would, would they be uh, rentals?
Rentals, yes, yeah. Yeah, not condos or anything like that.
Josh, you comment?
Yeah, okay, just to add a little color to this, um, we have, and Ethan knows just as well, we've worked on this probably sixteen months. Uh, I think since they had an accepted offer uh, from the Vine Street Lofts and Foss to get to this point, um, that offer is conditional on this approval here. Uh, so they've not yet closed on that property, that'll happen to occur, but assuming we get favorable recommendation at this point, um, that entire block, um. You're voting to rezone the east half of that block and the portions that are uh, unbuilt currently, uh, coming out of the comprehensive plan process as part of the land review. Uh, I anticipate rezoning the rest of the block uh, to R four, as that's what its current use already is, and instead of being zone I two. Um, kind of like Ethan said, this is kind of a broad brush uh, that went through B Z A, just to kind of define the sandbox and make sure that they were going to. Be able to do something on that particular location, uh, the particulars as far as what it's gonna look like, quad, duplex, two, two-story, et cetera. Uh, it's still kind of a little bit TBD, they know kind of what they want to do, but as they go through that process, or we go through that process, if there are other items that have to be identified. Um, through the zoning process, they'll come back through that process, uh, as they refine. Again, this is really just a broad stroke, just to make sure they can do what they want to do. Uh, before they close on the uh, sale of the unit, and then the last thing I would note is that entire, as you'll recall. Uh, that entire block was abated for the Vine Street Lofts, and that's almost about time to, to roll off. Um, but once they close on that transaction, uh, we'll get with the clerk, and I'm not sure if that comes back here to remove, or if that's just a administrative thing, but that portion will be removed from the abatement.
I think we just need to let.
Yeah.
Josh, could you restate what you said about the rezoning? We're looking at a rezone, all this pink and blue part on here.
Correct.
And what else would be rezoned into the future?
So as part of the comprehensive plan, we look at zoning, our, our land use. Um, there are quite a few parcels throughout the city that are, I want to call themselves the islands of zones that. Don't make sense anymore, aren't zoned that way. Um, as we've seen that area kind of be redeveloped from I two and I one. Uh, you think the, the lofts, both the, that, the Vine Street and the ones across the street, and then you look at Indiana desk, that we rezoned it basically a commercial slash residential P U D versus I two. Um, the Vine Street Lofts currently exists as I two, um, because of the structure of, of their entity. Um, I couldn't get them on board to be part of this rezone at this point. Um, just because there were too many layers of persons, and that's a lot of the reasons why it took sixteen months to get to this point for them. Uh, so we just decided that we would do it on the backend, when we go through the comprehensive plan to make that R four. To match what you are now rezoning as to R four on that half of the uh, uh, the block, because in my opinion. As they already exist as heavy, heavy residential, if not an I two entity, any changes or future things that they may want to do. It would make sense for them to be R four now, instead of having variances based on I two standards that don't really apply to them.
Is residential not in I two? Or why would that still have been I two, and those are definitely, you're talking where these apartments are?
Sure, probably because they got a variance back in the day, as opposed to rezoning.
That's what they, that's.
Yeah.
We in fact talked to uh, PAFs about whether they wanted to go through the rezoning process or go through the variant. Additional variances, and they cited on the uh, side of going to the rezoning, which I think is probably.
This one bumps up to residential on the other side.
Yeah. I, I think long-term it made more sense, um, and cleaned it up a little bit. Sorry, didn't need to.
Thank you.
I think, I don't know if you said it, Josh, I think, I think, I think you got it, the, the other lot, lot one, that would be rezoned later. It's not because they don't agree with it, it's just the logistics of getting all the signatures and approvals, so.
That's correct.
Well, it's two separate projects. Yes, that gets that existing, and this is intended to be built.
In I two, with a variance, so with their tax rate, be higher?
Um, the uh, um, per a few conversations with the assessors over various projects. How we zone things doesn't affect how they're assessed, it's how their use is and from, regardless of how we zone it, if, if it's a grass field, or in, or it's mowed, or it's a. Uh, corn, or whatever, it's a house, a house is a house, and I two, or whatever, as far as assessment goes.
Makes sense.
No.
But because it is apartments, it would be a higher rate than a house. Because it's rental. Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, anything else? Did, did you, did you say, wait, what your timeline was, I'm sorry.
Uh, there, I think pending approval and then them closing, I think they're ready to start. I don't think they have anything definitive yet, because once again, they're just. Trying to get through the process to see what's, if this is something that they're able to do. Um, and then we're gonna really start finalizing the, the plans for the development itself. So I don't know if that's gonna be six months or a year, what their ideal timeline is on it.
Probably, preferably sooner than later, it sounds.
Yeah, that's what I gather from them.
And that, I think this is the really biggest of the space.
Yeah, I agree.
But depending on how many live in each unit, that is a large amount of people that would be living, it could be a hundred people or something, whether they are in those units.
Yeah, I guess it could be, what, eighty bedrooms, so forty units is what they're looking at doing right now, yeah.
Thank you. So I'm sure it's, it's thought out that, you know, you're paving a lot of area, you're covering a lot of uh, area with those, and stuff like that. That hillside is a little bit of a concern, it's the city, are we prepared for something like that, with a lot of water that's gonna run up all the parking lots and stuff like that? Usually they're not, though, living in that area, it's probably one of the least, blood pro variants that I'd be concerned.
Yeah, and the other consideration is, well, whenever it goes to the planning process, we are gonna follow the ordinance, and we're gonna re, uh, retain that water and slow everything down. It's gonna be better once we get through the development side of it, um, but.
About some possibilities.
Yeah, it's easier. And again, I knew I didn't, I'd be covered, I just was looking at that, thinking, wow, that's, that's a lot of, sort of.
Underground detention, yeah, it's not turned on. Still, 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 more.
All right.
It's turning a lot of grass into a lot of concrete.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and a lot of it is, you know, gravel, like it used to be um, an industrial complex, right? So there's a lot of roof there, there's a lot of gravel there, a lot of concrete, right now it's grown up, it's kind of a jungle. Uh, but a lot of that will get fixed, uh, and with that will detain a lot of water and help slow it down.
Okay, great. That's great.
So, I, I do have a question. So I, I do have a question though on the kind of aesthetics of it, so where the pink is on that map? That's parking, so is the front door facing that pink? Or is it facing the other way?
No, it'll be facing the pink side, yeah, the parking lot side.
So when you compare it to um the library, it's really kind of the opposite though, because the front doors are at the curve.
No, I said just take, think of libraries where.
Yeah, but then you've been the parking in front of the front door and not behind.
Yeah, and but and we, we looked at both options, um and once again, this is kind of preliminarily, but. It was hard to put the buildings up against Leopold Street and still get the parking on the other side, the way. Once again, topography played a big role into this and the way you tried to get into the parking lot themselves, it only made sense to have that parking lot along the street and then the buildings behind it.
Any other questions? Now I have a motion Gavin, second Vince on this. Call for vote, all in favors and saying aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is. Opioid litigation, I think.
Yes, sir. As you know, from um previous communications from my office to the council, um there has been a settlement. Uh, proposed in the opioid litigation, that settlement is with Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family. Um, we are not liberty to discuss the details of that settlement um at a public meeting. Uh, but it has been um strongly recommended to approve the settlement. By each of the um municipalities located in the state of Indiana. And I will say that um if you recall uh back when um. We were going through the first round of uh settlement discussions and and settlements with um the original defendants. The state of Indiana passed legislation that really took the power away from municipalities and and gave the power to oversee those settlements. Uh, to the attorney general's office, which is where it still resides. But the Sackler family's attorneys are demanding that each um municipal entity. Go through the approval process, and so we have been advised that that is what we need to do. So tonight, um I'm asking the council to provide us um authority. To proceed with the uh execution of the settlement document that is required by the city. As well as approve the settlement um with Purdue Pharma and the Sackler family.
I'll make a motion that be approved legal to prepare the documents requested by the Sackler family to be approved settlement for Purdue Pharma.
Do you have a motion for Paul? I'll say yeah, second little bits.
And just to be clear, we received a settlement package, so the mayor received a settlement package um from. The uh consortium, which is the group of attorneys representing the city and all and the other uh municipalities and counties. Um, and he would enter that via docti sign on behalf of the city and.
And Renee, although we can't disclose the details of this particular settlement, the other monies would continue to come in until the year twenty thirty eight. Does that, would this follow that same order?
This has its own timeline, but it's about a sixteen year pay, payback.
So not being able to to discuss the details in this setting. Um, we had, we had an executive session on the other round, that this was not part of that discussion, right?
That's correct.
So, uh, the the motion that has been made is it's, is it to accept the terms of the settlement?
Yes.
How can I throw it on that, I don't want to click details of it.
Well, I sent you information out several times and.
Okay, so nothing's changed?
No, no, that whole's changed.
Have a motion for Paul, the second Vince, all in favors and by saying aye. Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
And next on the agenda is the segments of donations.
I'm requesting uh the council accept the donations for the month of July from the Parks Department. Um, it's restricted donation totally one thousand dollars and the park board has approved um. The restrictions on those steps, uh those donations, uh but then I'm also requesting. The council has that donations for the month of June and July for the art department unrestricted totally. Nine thousand six hundred and fifty seven dollars and twenty five cents for the months of June and July combined. And the restricted donations, one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for the month of June and July combined. And the art department or the art board has approved the restrictions on the restricted.
I'll make a motion to accept the donations as presented. A motion Gavin. Second, second John, we're looking at the discussion. Yeah, just shows you as you have much support given. President, people that are taking advantage, not being so, people vying for the energy service of the city. You have any comments? If not, all in favors and by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's see, next on the agenda is the board appointment, that's that's turn that over to. And Phil.
And Jen. Uh, I'll start out then, you guys chime in whenever, um just to give everybody a quick update. Uh, we we mentioned that we are working with uh Renee and Ms. Burkham, who is a uh. I guess she's back in our, or Germany probably on her way over pretty soon, so. She is, uh, we tasked her with coming up with approach and a procedure so we can enter in and uh. Log and document when people are interested in being with any type of board. And uh also give us a procedure from a board's perspective on finding when we should start looking. And evaluating and and the procedure of doing that, so uh we are working on that now. She has come up uh just this last week with uh a bunch of information and typed up at uh the procedure for us. So uh three of us as well as hopefully Renee at some point, uh uh I think it's second, third weekend uh in September. Um, Nancy's got a busy schedule here, so uh uh anyway, uh we're gonna be convenient again just to approve this and go over and make sure. Uh, it's what we want, but uh to that point, we're delighted to say if you go in the uh city Jasper website right now. Uh, Jane kind of ran me through that uh yesterday, but if you go in there and I think it's under. I'll be like, yes, sorry, and you go in there and there's a uh, and there you click on if you want to uh enter in. Like as example, if you're interested in being on a particular board, uh it it takes you right to a questionnaire and it asks, uh. We we worked in uh uh store camping, Renee did uh probably most of the work on that and uh. Uh, figured out what, what, what questions we want to ask and and how we uh. Something like that, uh where, where do you want to go as as far as being on a particular board? And so uh uh the information and the, the, the big part of it, we were concerned about. Once you enter then how it's tracked, so it's going to Kale and Cindy. And uh uh so they will have the information, so when we get to a point where we need to appoint somebody to a board. Uh, it actually takes that information, then automatically populates the spreadsheet, which is fantastic. So it makes it really easy to see if you have a a particular board opening, uh. You'll have four or five names or whatever, and hopefully, you know, we can go to those names, so. Uh, I I think it's gonna be a great tool for us and again, uh eliminate some of the hiccups maybe that we had on. One of the last ones that uh that was my fault, I'm out, but there's a learning process on it as well, but uh it it just allows us, you know, after we're gone. Uh, the the uh council to continuously uh uh be asked at certain times of the year that. Hey, you need to start considering at this point, six months or uh at the end of the year, you're gonna have a a couple uh points that's come come up. And that way you, it gives you plenty of time to uh uh to work on that and and follow it, so. Anything you want to add on that?
I'll just chime in that uh we have not officially made this decision, but thought it'd be good if it was on the January. Council agenda to look at the board appointments and how they're coming due maybe at the end of that year. And then in July, put it on the uh agenda again to really focus hard on some of those. And also, um Lauren did a great job on this uh particular area of the website. It says, um, I am interested in serving on the following boards and commissions. And then it lists all of those in a description of each one, when they meet, so it's very detailed on there and then you would just check that. So we're encouraging that if you know of anyone that would like to serve on a board, have them fill this out when it goes live. It's still in the test mode, but if you want to do it as a test, then Jane can see how it's reporting those also and how that. Data is being stored, um so I would encourage you to go on there and kind of take the test, it looks exactly like it would if it was live. They did a great job with it, but the important thing is get it put on the agenda, so all of a sudden in November, like, oh my gosh. We have to appoint someone by the end of December uh for a new appointment.
Yeah, and I, I just want to make it clear that it is not a guarantee that an individual that submits their name would be. Chose for each is to access the mission, it is an interest in being. Exactly. And then you go through the screening process to each of them, sorry.
I think it's just creating a vehicle and processing both for us to follow, and I think it's very helpful.
What was specifically helpful in that regard, we've, we've got a tremendous talent pool in this community and we've heard people before. How do I get involved?
Right.
And if uh if we don't know that they're interested until after the fact, it's very difficult to get them involved, so it helps us build a. The bit, the deep bench or build a far key that he wants, yeah.
And I do invite council to to go on that website and and enter your name in and just see how it it behaves and then. Maybe talk to Jane and say, hey, you know, did you get mine and is it entered in and things like that, and then we, you know, it it helps server evaluate, make sure that. We don't have any glitches in it as well, but it looks like so far it's, it's running well, yeah.
Also talk about a timeline that the uh submittal would be good for, so it'll expire after three or four years. After recent, so that your interest level changes with your life, you know, it changes with your life, so. Want to make sure that at that time you have an interest.
Actually, just want to mention too, that you can access the city's website from the Jasper inside app. Makes it very easy to just push that button and it's there.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate the voice we've done on that. Anything else? Not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Ball and Jen, all in favors and by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?